Call the meetings in order. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Should we start with the pledge first?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deedai?
Dear.
Crouch?
Dear.
Gary?
Here.
McMullen?
Here.
Can you hear me okay, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Lansford?
Here. We'll move to any changes to the menu?
I'd like to add for in the closed session, along with collective bargaining, the discussion and performance of administrative employees.
Any other changes to the date?
No.
Then we'll move to a public comment with three minutes, three minutes left. Anyone have some? I would address the council stuff, the stadium. Stadium, I keep saying that. The podium, and we proceed. Hearing none, we'll move to unfinished business number one.
Mr. Mayor, as a procedural matter, last time this ordinance was before the council, it had been tabled. So a motion to remove the matter, a motion to remove the matter from the table would be in order.
Okay, so move to remove the matter from the table. Or remove the table.
Second.
Is your second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Moving to new business?
Yep. We need to take up the matter, now we need to take up the matter of the ordinance itself.
Okay.
I had said that it was going to be tabled last time. And I actually have not heard anything on it since I've been there, ma'am. Have you heard any updates?
I did, it should be in your packet.
I missed it, I bet.
This packet?
Yeah, I gave it to the packet, it should be in your packet.
Yeah, it's here, I just went right past it.
Mr. Vianney, he submitted some new artwork for the sign. He's now proposing, rather than the ground monument sign that was initially, he's going to put a smaller electronic sign on the existing Third Street Cafe sign post. That is now what he's proposing, but it would be used for off-site advertising. He would allow for the sale of that sign to any business that would like to, anyone around town that would like to purchase that space. Stack recommendation will be to approve, but it is up to council. If you'd like to send it back to plan commission to review that change, that's your prerogative, but at the plan commission, I didn't see anything that would probably be an objection to that change. It's a smaller sign than what he initially asked for.
Smaller and on the existing?
And on the existing pole.
So is he just replacing that existing sign there with this electronic billboard?
No, he'll be adding electronic billboard below. It should be artwork in the packet. It's a small, it's a small electronic sign below the Third Street logo sign.
So he's not changing any request or anything to be changed other than the sizes?
It's a smaller size than what the plan commission approved, but the plan commission approved a ground monument. About, it was a six-foot tall sign on the ground to the north of Third Street Cafe. He's now come back and wants to put it on the post, but allow for the sale of advertising on that sign.
Yeah, forty-one by eighty-seven, Lloyd.
Yeah, it was originally forty-seven by a hundred and eleven, I think.
And we had any citizens complaining about the signage?
No.
I haven't, I have not heard any. Would the council have any objection to recommending a change to the ordinance?
Well, we wouldn't need to change the ordinance because the ordinance would provide for the new artwork estimate.
The ordinance in your packet would allow for the, especially if granted, will be for the sign on the post. That is the ordinance in front of you tonight.
That is the current ordinance?
The one you have in your packet, yes, that you'll be voting.
What's council's feelings?
I'm all right with it, I mean, I'm seeing a lot more of them in a lot of other communities, you know? I think as long as it's not blinding bright.
It'll have to adhere to our code, which has limits to that.
Well, if it can be high enough to where it's not going to be obstructing vision.
No.
I'm okay with it.
Tara?
Yeah, I, yeah, this is probably a better location because in the lot, I think it'd be hard to see coming from the sun.
Yeah.
Anyway, so it's probably better for, yeah, it's probably better for him. My only concern was the ground level was you've got people going into McDonald's, and it's always busy, and people splitting their breaks and pulling. But I think this is high enough up that it won't cause issues, so.
And his intent is to plan to use it for advertising primarily?
He'll use it for both the Third Street Cafe business and if someone pays him fifty dollars, whatever the case may be, to rent it out, then he would accept that. It's largely like the one you did at St. Mike's, the council passed at St. Mike's a couple of years ago.
It shouldn't be that big.
So it would be basically, you'll see his menu during business hours after business, he'll have advertisement.
Sure.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Do we need to make a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance of Britain.
Okay, Tara?
Kim makes the second. Any other questions or comments? Not, clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item three. Request a motion to adopt an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes.
No, we missed number two.
Item two.
Item two is the budget.
I thought we dropped one from the
No.
agenda.
Nope.
Item one was tabled.
No, item one, we just voted on. That was approved, that's a sign ordinance. Item number two is the ordinance adopting and approving the budget for fiscal year 2022. So we need a motion for approval of that ordinance.
So moved. Is your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Other than the meetings we've already had? If not, clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
And Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Now we're down on item three. I entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes on real property for the purposes for defraying expenses for all corporate purposes for the city of Streeter, LaSalle, Livingston County, Illinois, for fiscal year commencing January first, 2022, and ending on December thirty-first, 2020. Any comments?
I could make a couple of remarks.
Simon, Brian.
As I reported my memo to you, the proposed levy is going to increase by two hundred and two thousand dollars. And because of an increase in the equalized assessed value in the community over the past year, the actual taxes paid are going to go down slightly if the value of the property remains the same. The example I gave in my memo was the value of a house at a hundred thousand dollars will actually pay seven dollars and ten cents less. So the overall levy increases down around four point nine nine percent, but most of that is attributed to the increase in equalized assessed value in the community. The overall trends of the city continue, we're continuing to struggle with increased fireplace pension costs. This levy will pay a hundred percent of the recommended actuarial contribution. But in order to achieve that, still remaining by percent, we have to reduce the levies in our general corporate purposes lines. And so pension costs continue to consume operational dollars. Essentially, we're paying for services divided in prior years. I'm expecting that with multiple years of a hundred percent contribution, the past ninety-three years we ran a hundred percent. And we have a few, fewer police officers, a couple of police officers retired than we do now, so the position, that future contributions should, should, the increases should be reduced. But every year, an actuarial study has to be performed, we will know every year what we get to contribute. So it's good news in the sense that taxes for the house that did not increase the value exactly will be going down slightly.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
So we need a motion to approve.
A motion is second.
So moved.
A second.
Any other discussion? If not, clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item four. Entertain an ordinance abating the tax levy for the year 2021 to pay the principal and interest on three million, two hundred thousand dollars obligation bonds. We have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item five. Request a motion to adopt an ordinance abating the tax stricture to general obligation bonds alternative revenue sources series two, zero, one, six, B of the city of Streeter, LaSalle, Livingston County, Illinois.
So moved.
Sorry, and a motion is your second?
A second.
Any other discussion or comments? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to second to adopt an ordinance abating the tax general obligation bonds to pay the principal and interest on one million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand. The alternative revenue sources, series twenty seventeen A.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Item seven. Entertain a motion abating the tax levy for the year 2021 to pay the principal and interest on one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand general obligation bonds, twenty seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2021 to pay the principal and interest on five hundred and eighty-five thousand of general obligation bonds, series twenty seventeen C of the city of Streeter. We have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy for the year 2021 to pay the principal and interest on two million, five hundred thousand dollars of general obligation bonds, series twenty nineteen of the city of Streeter, LaSalle, Livingston County, Illinois. We have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Do we have to have a motion for the the highway?
Yes.
I think I got it. Entertain a motion appropriating fifteen thousand dollars of MFT funds in connection with roadway maintenance projects for the maintenance of the streets and highways of the city of Streeter under the provisions of the Illinois Highway Code. We have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to authorize a resolution appropriate one hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in connection with the roadway maintenance project for fiscal year twenty-two for the maintenance of streets and highways for the city of Streeter under the provisions of the Illinois Highway Code.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Now I am yelling on the right wing.
Yes, the vacation right wing, that's correct.
I entertain a motion and ordinance authorizing the vacation of a public city right-of-way two hundred and eleven feet long and twenty feet wide in north and south alley here on seven oh one Wisconsin Avenue between Larue and Morelle Streets. We have a motion, please. So moved. Your second?
Second.
Discussion?
No opposition to this?
No opposition, I did hear from one neighboring property owner who was in support. So this will vacate the, there's no utilities or anything back there. Allow a couple of them to put up some fences and extend their yards.
So was this like an abandoned alley?
Yeah, never opened, yeah, it was a grass alley.
Any other comments or questions? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
I entertain a motion to approve the meeting and holiday schedule for 2022.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
I now have a resolution request for support and leverage of the city of Streeter for a proposed EEA grant project for the incubator. Comments? Can I have a motion, please?
Do the motion, second.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Well, this is part of a long-range repurposing, studying, repurposing of the old armory building for use as an incubator. There's been, there was a study conducted a year ago with the University of Illinois, and they recommended essentially what is, we're now seeking grant dollars to fund, which would be some remodeling of some of the spaces, including the kitchen, and to allow for a makers lab and other equipment and facilities that would be useful for entrepreneurs looking at developing these businesses. If we're successful, there'll be a match at that point, we'll have to decide the source of funding for the match. There's other issues that need to go forward if we're successful, including how we're going to actually operate and so forth. There is an appointed incubator board that has overseen this process. Matt Seaton was on board, and now he's over at the college, and we've had some good discussions with him at the college. The potential for some, at least cooperation between our incubator and the college, but nothing has been agreed to, we've just had the very preliminary discussion stages. So this is a grant application to essentially remodel a good part of the facility, not including the gym space, although there's a little corner that might be affected.
The grant will actually, it'll renovate the kitchen and provide a food packaging area. It'll take a 3D printer space, a plastics shop, a metal shop, and a wood shop, as well as repaving of the parking lot.
We have a motion. So moved.
No, we've, we've already had a motion by Tara and Brian.
Any other comments? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
And the next one I have is a resolution in support
No, we're ready for the consent agenda.
Like the consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda to, with a fund warrant total of nine hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye.
Do we want to do city official comments before the executive session?
I'm sorry, I can't.
I'm sorry, would the, would council like to do the city official comments before executive session?
I think so. That way Gary, you won't have to stay if you don't want to, probably. Any comments? Tim?
Okay.
Ryan?
Just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
I'm saying Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I studied yesterday with things again for Light Up Streeter. So I was involved in making our town festive. And then with Ed gone, I feel like I can do the tourism, like the events. But there is a world premiere musical at the Streeter High School Auditorium coming up, called, its name was Nicholas. And so it's musical. Friday and Saturday, there's three shows. And then there's, it's a wonderful live, live on the air in the lane that starts Thursday and runs through Sunday. Eaglehead has some holiday movies, so there's all sorts of activities in Streeter. When I hear people say there's something to do in Streeter, this is a good example of things that are on there to do. So there's a whole bunch of activities going on this week, holiday themed. So encourage everybody to try to do one of them.
I do want to address one thing about Light Up Streeter. Bear with us with this wet weather. We've been being notified when half the park is out due to mother nature. As it dries out, the lights will come back on. We have ground fault detectors on the boxes to prevent any catastrophes. So we know they're out. We're working with it, and as it gets colder and drier, they'll be on and on until after the New Year.
Okay, thank you. I just say this, just to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We have been entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining under five I L C S one twenty dash two two collective bargaining.
And also performance of administrative personnel.
And the performance of administrative personnel.
So moved.
Second. Second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Deedai?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford? Mayor Lanceford?
Aye. So we can adjourn to-
There's a number of media on the phone.
Close second.
And Matt Seaton on the phone.
No, besides the manager, it's like this.
Oh.
Yes, that's still going.
So, do we need to, please, phone, have more?